Hello, everyone. Welcome to another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oiling. I'm Coach Ashley. Today, we are joined by founders Greg and Amanda Kilmine. Hello.
Hello, everybody.
We also have our resident superheroes Colin and Julie. Colin's got his little mini watching Paw Patrol.
We're watching. She's very big into going to kids play places and you know, like the big, the big crazy like scaffolding kind of thing. So that's all we watch now on YouTube. So she like studies how to play at those play places and then she just like dominates all of the bigger kids.
Pretty amazing. That's gonna be incredible. On top of her being a future drummer, is there a Canadian Gladiator? Cause she's gonna win it.
Oh, she's gonna do everything. She'll do it all.
I love it. I love it. And guys, without further ado, we also have a very, very special guest with us today. We have Dr. Linda here. I'm so excited that you are here with us and, and we're going to be talking today about how Linda grows her business with wellness scans. She's actually put together a complete resource for those of you who are just getting started with it or who, you know, are doing this and want to really excel at incorporating this into your business. So excited to get into that today. But first, just a little bit of kid, a little bit of housekeeping. And just so you know, if you're new here, brand new, welcome. This is something that we do for free every single week at noon Eastern for Team YL. This is for anybody, anybody out there in the whole wide world. Get Oiling is a global Team YL platform. So you're welcome here, whether you're a member of the Get Oiling community yet or not. We're here to help you grow your business with topics like these that we're talking about today and support if you are using your Get Oiling platform to grow. So if you came here looking for help today, if you're looking for specific hands-on help, please, please go ahead and put your questions into the Q and A so that we could be working with you throughout the call. And if there's something that you need to see, you, you need to get eyes on something that you're doing, please make a request in the Q and A so that we can make sure that we save time for you at the close of our call today. Now, would you please let us know, because there's so many of us here today, let us know where you are coming in from? We would love to know. We've, we're all over the place here in North America. We've got our typical New Yorker here who's actually on the, the left coast today, right?
That's right.
Love it. We've got spring Texas, Kansas City, Minnesota, Arkansas, Arizona, North Carolina, Kansas, let's see, Minnesota, we're all over the place. Illinois, Florida, Houston. I'm so jealous of all you people in warm places. We have another blizzard coming in today. Linda, you got out just in time.
Oh, wow. Thank goodness. I'm gonna have to stay out here a little bit longer.
Right. Do it. Alright, so, so again, you guys go ahead and let us know in the chat. One question that I have for everyone who's here today, I'd love to see maybe just a quick show of hands. How many of you currently use wellness scans to grow your young living business? Whether that's to get new leads, to help people get onto product, to know the right things to use, maybe you use scans on yourself. What do you, and, and tell us about what you use. We see Zito here, right? We're gonna be talking a lot about Zito today. Excellent Zito insights. We got some iTovi users. Alright, fantastic. Alright, so let's talk Linda, I'm gonna switch over to our speaker views so we can chat. So let's start out, like, let us know a little bit about your background, you know, how'd you get started with Young Living? You know, let's, let's talk about that first.
Alright, so this is so exciting. Thank you guys for having me on today and getting to be a little bit on the other side of the weekly work sessions. For those of you probably that have never met me before, my name is Linda Allen. I am a clinical doctor of physical therapy. That's what I do by profession. But about me, I am an avid born and raised New Yorker. So right now, I'm actually on the West Coast on a little vacation. I'm in California right now, but I am an avid traveler. I love to travel internationally. I love to dance. I love to educate. I, I feel like that has been a passion of mine since I was very little, always thought I was gonna be a teacher and ended up very heavily into sports and that's how I got into PT. I ended up in Young Living actually in 2017 after battling probably over a decade of chronic sinus infections and some health issues. And, and so I might be your classic case of a healthcare provider who wasn't really doing a good job of taking care of herself because I was so busy taking care of everybody else, right? I've grown up as a caregiver, or my mother mainly when I was young, I know, at a very young age. And then over the last five or six years, or probably say from 2015 to 2020, my father got sick and, and so we kind of switched modes and focus went really onto him for those five years before he passed away. So I have been a very busy person, probably always, always. I've always been on the go, on the move. If you know anything about New York and, you know, born and raised New Yorkers, we move fast, we talk fast, we do everything fast. And, you know, if it's not moving fast enough, we're gonna push it faster. So when I got introduced to Young Living, it was really for personal reasons. I had no interest in doing the business. I didn't know about the business. I was really more so looking for relief and I didn't really understand anything about the products, how they worked, why they could work. And I was willing to try them and I had immediate relief. Really started to push my practice of how I deliver healthcare into a totally different ballgame, right? So for those of us that are in the medical community, we're very much taught a certain way of how to do things and how to care for patients. And it's very much based on this more westernized model of managing sick care. Really, that's, that's really what I was doing. But there was a back end to the patient education piece that really reflected in sharing Young Living because we're out here to help people understand what the products can do for them and how embracing a more natural holistic lifestyle can be the key to having the life that they're really seeking. Or they moved away necessarily from the lifestyle that they had to a more fast-paced, convenient-based lifestyle. And now they're trying to get back to it. And so when I got introduced to Young Living, it kind of resparked for me this idea that I need to focus more for my patients, being able to understand what preventative wellness can look like and how impactful it can be to understand where that can really take somebody in terms of their health, their finances, their ability to spend time with their family and, and really be able to live an abundant life. And when I started to get personal health relief for myself, one of the things that kind of triggered that was going to a Young Living rally. And I experienced a Zito Balance scan for myself. And for those of you that are not familiar with Zito Balance, Zito is a technology software company based in Utah that has different wellness scans that are FDA-approved Class II medical devices. They don't diagnose, treat, or cure, but they are able to give you a great understanding of the status of your health. And it can suggest products that can help you address those issues. When I got that first scan, I happened to notice it said specific things about my gut health. And I didn't believe it because in my eyes, I didn't have any problems, meaning there were no physical things that I was complaining about relative to my stomach, relative to my liver. But I had chronic sinus infections for over 12 years and I also started to develop rosacea. And one day after that scan, probably about a month ago after that, my rosacea kicked in quite severe. I had never had it so severe. And when you're on antibiotics for a long time, you know, things start to change in your body. And I started to pay attention to what that scan said. I went back to it and I started to pay attention to the products it suggested. And I tried them and within six months, my rosacea completely cleared. And when I joined, Young Living was 2017 and now it's 2022 and I have yet to have had a sinus infection. So, you know, there were things that slowly happened and I started to embrace products differently. I was one of those people who said, I don't need to be on subscribe to save and I'll try it for one month and cancel and I never got off. And so it really just kind of helped me to see that I wanted to share these products with individuals because I had a lot of friends and a lot of people in my community who needed the, they needed the products. And they needed them in a way that was going to be useful for their lifestyle. So let me tell you a little bit about how busy my lifestyle was because I think this is gonna be very relevant to you that are doing the business. You know, again, I'm a really busy New Yorker. I work full-time in New York. There's a lot of traffic. So I'm out of my house by 6:30 or, you know, in the morning and my job starts at about eight o'clock and I probably don't get home most days until five. And sometimes I'll have private clients after that. But most days after working, I was then driving to my parents' house to help care for my parents. I also was in a relationship that was out of state, right? So my now husband lives in North Carolina. And so every other month I was traveling back and forth. So we, um, we see that my life was pretty busy and I had very little time to grow a Young Living business, but we did share. And what happened quickly was that my business, my organization grew quite fast internationally. And so it was never planned to be like that, but I, I hit executive quite fast and wasn't really prepared for it and didn't really have any way to manage keeping track of all these members and what I was gonna do for them and how I was gonna really help create a sense of community. And I definitely did not have Get Oiling back then in my life. So it, you know, I want you guys to understand that, like, for some of you guys are gonna be busy moms. For some of you, you're gonna be busy full-time employees. For some of you, you're going to be exploring this business model for the first time. And maybe my story will be a really good example for you to see that you can still grow while having a lot of things going on. Okay, I, I never stopped traveling when my business was growing. But I also did not have a whole lot of time to host classes. I hosted them in the beginning. And one of my barriers was that I just could not figure out how to get people to classes once I got through my warm market. I also did not have a lot of time to host classes. And for me, my busy schedule, running classes was very time-consuming. The preparation, the actual hosting of the event, making sure people were gonna come. And the follow-up afterwards was non-existent because by then I was so exhausted from hosting the class. I didn't really have a good method for doing so. And eventually I did choose to get my own Zito Balance software, but that required me to have people in person. And that then became a new barrier for me because growing a business, when you have to, when you have a device that can help people, but you need them to be in person, can be quite challenging to grow when your team, I probably had less than 5% who lived in my region, meaning within an hour or two from me. Everyone else was in various states across the country, in Canada, Europe, the Philippines. So I was not going to be able to really figure out how to grow organically when I wasn't able to be present in front of them. And so one of the things that I want you guys to make sure you remember is that as you're growing the business, when you hit different barriers, it's not that you're stuck, it's just that you haven't found the right solution for what you need to be able to move past that point and get to the next stage of your goals. So this is really important for, for you guys to see that today, we're gonna be talking about how I use Zito eventually to reboost my business, to restructure our team, to be able to grow and to really change some key statistics in our business and keep it flourishing despite everything that's been going on in the last few years.
So let's talk a little bit about, actually, real, real quick, can, can we get a little insight into what sharing looked like in your business before scans? Or was scanning really like that was the ticket for you?
Was that like from the beginning? So before, before jumping into scanning and using that as a tool to grow my business, it was really more so in-person classes, vendor events, and online classes, like through Facebook events. That was really how I was growing initially in those first two years, right? That was really, that was what I had seen. That's what I knew from my upline. That was kind of what was normalized, you know, across the community was, you know, find people that you can think would benefit from the product, show up to class or host an online class. I was into social media. I guess I should mention at the time when I started Young Living, I had had another business that I was operating, a paint and sip business that I was operating as well. So I had employees for that business. And so I was already familiar with social media and how to use that to market and, and grow. But I wasn't really using my personal profile to talk about Young Living in any sort of way. And I was able to grow. I was able to help people there and I really kind of fizzled out. I felt like after a while, I just wasn't able to get the conversion I was looking for. So maybe people attended the class or at the vendor event, people came and people signed up to, you know, get in more information or they filled out a little contact card so I could follow up with them. But then you never got the response of hearing back from the person to develop that relationship and to really be able to learn what needs they're looking for help with. And so those were the first two years. And then by 2019, I explored the Zito Balance as an option. But again, remember, we were still doing a lot in person. The world hadn't shut down then. So that was fairly easy for the people who lived local to me, people who were close to me. But again, I wasn't thinking in the bigger picture, right? I had a global team and how was I really gonna be able to help them do so? Zito did have some options to be able to run scans remotely, but in addition to the barrier of having to have an actual device, a hand cradle that the person needed to put their hand on, they also needed to have a PC because it wasn't able to be run through Mac software very easily. So that became another barrier for me, right? I was able to do a lot of scans and my team wanted to experience them, but I wasn't able to figure out how to make that happen. So that's really what business growth looked like in the beginning. And the bit, the brand partners who were sharing or our customers who were sharing were also helping bring people to a live event or an online Facebook event. And so that's really how I grew before scanning became a primary method for me.
Okay. And so let's talk real quick. So I do have a few questions here in the chat because there are several popular scanner companies and devices for, for the Young Living brand partners use. And I think that just so you guys know who are here, I know we're talking a little about, about Zito and you're gonna be sharing a little bit more about Zito Insights specifically here in a moment. If you are scanning in your business, I think you should stay tuned for what's here today, for sure, period.
Yeah, definitely. There are quite a number of different companies, I think mainly two that most people are aware of, which is Zito and iTovi. But again, I, I want you guys to think about your business and how you reach your community, right? Young Living's goal is, and their mission is to get these oils, these products in every home across the globe. So how are you expanding your belief in being able to access people who are outside of your immediate community or in your immediate vicinity? What happens to your customers who are on the other side of the, the US if you happen to live in the US? Or what happens if you're an Australian member and all of a sudden you have someone interested in Europe? How are you really supporting them best to understand the product without feeling this internal struggle of feeling like you need to know everything? Because that is a big struggle that a lot of brand partners feel. I feel like I need to know everything. I really, I, I, I don't feel like I can share because I need to know as much as you. I didn't know anything about the products outside of the ones that I use and I still don't. I, I've used obviously a lot more in the five years. I've used a lot of products. Young Living is all I use in my house. And so I've explored a lot of products, but the way that I use them or the way that you use them is not the end-all, be-all. There are a lot of ways to use these 600-plus products. And so when somebody comes to you and says, what should I do for X? There's a fine line that we have to watch in between us coming to them as if we're helping diagnose, cure, or treat them versus providing them with an opportunity to learn about what's really going on with their current state of health and saying, this is what's showing based on the information your body is providing. These are suggested products and these are why these are being suggested. Would any of these be of interest to you to help support your goal of X, right? Because by now you should have known their concerns. You're building that relationship. And so using scans helps you to do that, whether it's iTovi or Zito, it does help you to get that net. But there is a cap on that when you are not able to access your team beyond the ones who are immediate to you or spending time mailing a device to your other brand partner in another state, because I've done that too, to be able to scan people in another section. Think about what your customers are and your brand partners and even frankly, you are doing and utilizing on a daily basis. And for most of you, that's your phone. That's your phone. You're growing your business through word of mouth and you're on your phone. It's something that's accessible to all with wifi. And so the reason why I love sharing about Zito Insights specifically is because it broke that barrier for me to be able to access anyone in the world and be able to help them learn about their current state of health and what suggested products would be best for them and have a conversation about what do they think they would like to take forward first in their wellness journey and then help them create an effective plan. And that is really what started to happen was I kept hoping and wishing Zito would create something that could eliminate that barrier of having to have a specific device. And, and so they came out with Zito Insights Pro. I was able to explore the scan through somebody who had already had it. And I knew right away, this is exactly what my team was asking me for. This was exactly what I could use to be able to continue to grow and do it regardless of where I was in the world, regardless of working full-time, regardless of being a caregiver, regardless of, you know, traveling to see my husband and, you know, all of those things. It eliminated all of those barriers. And so this was something that I really felt needed to be more accessible to the Young Living community. A lot of people don't know about the latest Zito products that they have and how it can help grow your business. And more so, how Get Oiling can merge directly with that to make this a seamless process, right? Because between 2017, when I joined, I joined Get Oiling very early on, didn't touch the website. Eventually created my website during the pandemic. It pushed me to do so. And now I have completely rebranded my website and Zito has been a part of my Get Oiling website from day one and how I was able to now offer this as a service under my business brand to be able to organically reach people when they wanted to know about more holistic, natural options.
Amazing. So just a quick thing here, you guys, I'm gonna put this in the chat. What Linda uses is called Zito Insights and it is, you can learn all about the technology and, and the biometric signatures. They use your voice and we, obviously, we don't work for Zito. We don't get paid by Zito, so we don't, you know, can't do a full explainer on that here. But there is a way to offer wellness scans virtually without a device and that's what Linda's using. So can we talk a little bit about what a scan experience looks like? Maybe, how are people asking for them? How are you offering them? Are you charging for them? That was a question I see over here in the Q and A. So can you walk us through a little bit of, of what a scan looks like for you?
Sure. So the way that the Zito Insights scans work is that you sign up for a paid subscription to be able to send links out to individuals. And when a customer receives a link, they set up their username and password and it instructs them to then go through this quick health assessment if they want to. And then it uses two particular biometrics, voice analysis and kinetic touch. You do 10-second voice recording. Doesn't matter what you say. They're not paying attention to the words that you say, but it's measuring the frequency and the energetic responses coming from your voice. And then you're using kinetic touch. You're, there are some little images that will pop up on the screen and then you are looking, they're looking to see how fast your response is in terms of touching them. And that creates what's called a spark. That spark is like your unique fingerprint. Think of it as your unique fingerprint or footprint and that then triggers the Zito algorithm in the software to be able to match your body's responses to specific wellness products, in this case, to the Young Living product line. And then create an interactive report that comes up within seconds that the person can then see what products are suggested, not only for overall wellness, but in, I think it's like 10 body systems areas or 12 body system areas and six lifestyle areas. And every time you click on a product, there are specific things that change and you literally see what happens as your baseline number goes from whatever it is. And the goal is to aim that, to get that overall percentage score as close to 100 or to get your body as close to homeostasis. So I send someone a link. They do the scan. And then we go over the report together, especially if it's someone who has never experienced a scan or someone who is on our current team for the first time. Now, over time, I have kind of changed my model and I've embraced this idea that I'm offering a service. And this service, when this would be presented anywhere outside of, you know, the, the person's home, somebody would be paying for this service because the information they're receiving is incredibly valuable. You're spending a, quite a bit of time with the person, one-on-one, to help them understand the product. And that's a chargeable thing. And I know some people feel a little bit hesitant about charging people. And so I have different tiers of what I do. For, for my members who are on the loyalty program, their scans are always free because they are able to then justify, justify based on the report, what they want to order next. And it helps them to normalize continuing to order regularly. For our members who are not on, we have a very, very low reduced rate for them to be able to access a scan. But if they join the loyalty, then they get their scans free. And for customers who are experiencing it for the first time, I do charge a fee. And how I do that is I have on Get Oiling, I set up a sales page. And that sales page allows them to do everything without me having to be present. They have access to my website. They see the link there. They sign up and pay. It triggers certain automations to happen, which includes things like getting to my calendar to schedule a time to review their report with me. Being able to get emails directly to them to understand what's going to happen, how they're going to get the scan and what they're going to do next. And then they get some follow-up emails after the scan to be able to help answer any questions after our report as well as be able to know that we're looking to grow our team. And if they had an amazing experience with their scan, we would love if they could share that experience with others. And so that's pretty much how the scan works and how I've kind of integrated it with Get Oiling. The nice part about it is I am on the go. So I use again, my phone a lot. And I've set up the links in what's called text replacement. I have a keyword that I can put in the text for somebody who I know personally and shoot it right to them, the link to sign up to get a scan. If somebody is not my personal contact and they are coming to me from somebody else, I direct them directly to my website, the link exactly on my Get Oiling website where they can sign up for it. And so again, it, it gives me time back in my day from feeling like I have to say, okay, when I get home, I'll send you this. And then you forget because this happened and that happened and all of these things happened. And so I really kind of created it seamless. I, I'm treating patients all day. When a patient is late in between then, I can go, done. They have exactly what they need to do the scan and I will then get an email triggered back to me when they have set up their scheduling. And text replacement is a great option. If you have an Android, I forget what it's called, but there is also an Android version of it. I highly suggest you use it because it will save you time to take your links and your Get Oiling pages that you use often and be able to, you know, send out information very fast, whether it's in Messenger, Instagram DMs, Facebook posts, whatever it may be. And so that's really how I use. Facebook posts, whatever it may be. And so that's really how I use it. If you have questions about text replacement or whatever it's called for Android, definitely Google it. There are quick videos on YouTube. It takes seconds to set up and it's free. So I highly suggest you use that, but that's what how um, that's pretty much how the experience goes when someone is looking to do a scan with me.
Okay, so let's recap that real quick, you guys, because I I hope you're taking notes here. This is such a big thing, right? So you've got your scan and because Linda is using uh, Zyto Insights. You can scan anyone from anywhere. And actually, you're not doing the scanning, like they take a link and then they do the scan on the website.
Right, they do it on their own time. So it it doesn't then require you to have to be present while they're doing it. They do the scan on their own free time. It takes probably less than ten minutes for them to do that entire scan. And how I've set it up is that that link, when they've done that scan. When they signed up to get a link to do the scan from me, they're already now signing up on my calendar. To be able to meet with me to go over that report. So that is then now automatically showing up in my Google Calendar and I'm doing all of that through Get Oiling.
And all you're doing is providing a link that lives on your website. If you're communicating with somebody and you've got, you know, shortened texts where you type in three, three characters and it pops out all of this website address. They book themselves, they scan themselves, they book themselves on a call with you. And then you show up and you analyze their results, you help them set up their order and on from there.
Absolutely, absolutely. And so you think about the ease of that, doing duplication for that. You know, what happened was I was on a real mission to increase my Subscribe to Save. Right back then it was called Essential Rewards and now it's called Subscribe to Save. I was on a mission to increase that because we had a large team, but we didn't have. A consistency in ordering monthly, right? Now it's a little different on how it's set up. You can order one, two or every three months. But really, when you think about your business, attrition is going to happen. You're going to lose members. So how can you build a sustainable, long-term business year to year? And that's through helping people see the value in Subscribe to Save. And so I was able to really utilize this as a way to help people create effective personalized plans. So remember, it's no longer what does Linda think said person needs. This is now saying, based on your scan, this is what's showing up. Do these things sound familiar to you as areas of concern? Okay, this is why this product is being suggested and everything is listed there. And and so from that, you're able to create a really effective um, plan for the person. And they can then see why they need said products because they're visually going to see what happens. And they can also then know exactly what they're going to order. You can help them set up their accounts if they don't have an account. And if they do, then they know exactly what to go back to. So I I I don't know about you guys, but some of you have been asking to see like what, what that sequence looks like. Would you guys like me to show you kind of what that looks like on on uh, my sales page or my page? Okay? All right, so let's take a little journey. Um, do I have access to screen share?
Hmm, yeah, you're about to, hold on. Everybody is ready for this, yes.
This journey a little bit um, real quick. So what I'm going to show you is. Uh, a little bit um, background, right? So my main website does not necessarily, maybe I should pull it up, right? So you guys can see a little bit about how my website looks a little bit different and then I will show you guys, okay? So let's green share. My website doesn't say anything about Young Living. Um, it shares that my brand, which is very specific to helping for health and wellness for African-American women, right? And that's my business brand. And in that, I have a particular link that has holistic service options outside of the other courses that I've created. And that's where they get introduced to Zyto. They don't know it's Young Living related. The business um, link there is also Young Living related and those are how I present Young Living to people. So let's go through, let's screen share. Okay, so are you guys able to see this site right here? Okay, so this is my newly rebranded Get Oiling website. And again, this has nothing to do with Young Living Peace. This is really my business brand here. But at the top of the menu bar, I have an option called Holistic Wellness Services. And when people click that, they're able to see a little quick video. And I have three options for them to explore services that I offer that are in the natural wellness space arena. The first one that is listed is Zyto Insights. It has a little video that's connected to YouTube that they can watch. That's two minutes to learn what it is. And when they click on it, they are able to get to a sales page that again, shows them what Zyto is. It will also show them a little bit about the background of what the scan looks like. And when they click the Scan Me Up, Sales Page pops up, okay? So in this instance, they pay, they click Yes, Get Me Started and they go right from there. I'm going to show you what it looks like for the member who is already on my team, right? So this is literally a carbon copy. This is for the non-member. And this is my sales page. It's carbon copy, but slightly different for a person who is on my team. When they click here, and I'm just going to pretend like I am. Doing this myself, I agree and click started. What's going to happen is they're going to get linked directly to my calendar. So you guys see what happened there? They, and regardless of if they're paying or not, they click it. They go straight to my calendar and right now, obviously I'm away on vacation, so I block off the rest of this month um, time-wise. But they would then see dates and times that would be available. It gives them information about the scan itself. And they go ahead. On my end, then I receive an email saying that somebody signed up for a Zyto Insight scan. I then go to Zyto Insights on my backend and I send them a link. They do the scan and then when they finish the scan, this is what pops up when they finish the scan. And on the date that they chose in the calendar, I am then meeting with them to review this scan. So this is one of the scans that I did a while back, um, just using an old version of a scan that I did. And you'll see it, it has an adaptability report and a systems report. And these numbers here are all interactive because the goal when it's Zyto Insight scan is to get your outcome percentage score. Or your level of homeostasis of health as close to a hundred as possible. And this particular scan that I did was at a seventy-two. But there are specific areas of wellness that it's looking at, emotions, function and energetic. And as it's listing products, it's listing them in in order of how they will help my health. So if I pick the first one, Laura's Noblest Essential Oil, you'll see what happens to my numbers. My baseline went from a seventy-two to eighty-five and these numbers also changed. And so what I started to do as I went through scans was back in the day, I was writing this on paper. Like what happened to these numbers as we picked a certain product? Because you can't remember it all. And then eventually I created a system to also keep track of this so that for follow-up purposes, it would be a little bit easier. And if you want to see on the systems report, things that it provides you information-wise, is what's happening in all of these areas of function. And the yellow is your current baseline for all of these areas. The goal is to get them to the far right of the bar graph, right? So during this time, this was done in January of twenty twenty-one. It was about a year since my father had passed away. I was going through a lot of stress at the time, right? Because I was still grieving a lot. So mental, emotional stress, right? You can see it was very, very low. And you could see suggested products and stressors that were suggested to me. And what would happen if I chose to say I'd be open to considering ordering Brain Power? How did that help my overall wellness in this particular area, right? Say someone's asking you about stress and it pops up, you can see it. But even more so is you can see specific stressors and the specific stressors in that area. In terms of body tissues and structures that may be causing stress in that area, which is very powerful for somebody, right? For me, again, my history was I had a long history of GI issues from lots of medication, from chronic sinus issues. So there are times when I'm under stress that my colon and GI system heavily gets hit, right? And so um, it's just a really great, accurate way to see what's going on. And then it describes the body system or even under the products, you can click the arrow down and learn specifically from the Young Living catalog. About the product. And at the top right here, you get this cute little clipboard and each time somebody decides to check a product that they'd be open to ordering. It's creating a shopping list. And what you can do is put your cute little Young Living link right attached to this button. And it will shoot them right to your Young Living referred link. And they can create their account and place their order, in order whatever they want. Easy peasy. And if this person's already a member, then they're going to just log into their Young Living account and place their order. Whether it's a shop order or Subscribe to Save. But it holds then all the reports and it maintains them so that you can see um, them there. And it also provides an opportunity for you to learn about wellness services that can work in conjunction. So that's really the the process of what happens in a Zyto Insight scan, like a very condensed version of it. But again, it's very interactive and engaging. It lets somebody see right away what can happen when a product like amino wise is added to my list. What happened to my baseline state of health, right? Two products or three products right there changed dramatically my state of health. And so I think you guys can see, right? They've literally gone from um, the sales page to my calendar. And I sent them a link, they did the scan and on the calendar date that they chose, I reviewed the scan with them. So it's pretty straightforward and seamless, but it helps you see how you can integrate Get Oiling. And make this operation of delivering a service run very seamlessly without using so much of your time. And a lot of people will say, well, you know, you guys have been asking about iTobi. Again, iTobi requires you to have in-person. So before I rebranded, I did have two options on my sales page, Insights and Zyto Balance. Obviously, the Zyto Balance was only being offered to people who lived within a certain distance. Because I wasn't going to be driving across states to provide a scan for them. So depending on what they wanted, that's where it is. And right now, it's not currently on my page because I'm in the midst of another life stage, right? I just got married, I am in the process of finishing up work and then I will be moving states. So right now, Zyto Balance is not being shown as a service I offer. But once I finish moving, it will be back on the sales page. And then if my friend in Europe wants to do a scan, I can send the Insights link to them. If I have someone locally that wants to do a scan, then they have their choice of what works best for them. But now you don't have to worry about people not showing up, people forgetting and all of those things. Because here's what happens for me when somebody doesn't do the scan. I send them a reschedule link in Calendly to reschedule their time with me because they haven't done their part. For then them to have that time one-on-one with me. And it saves you then the time that could be potentially wasted while you're sitting there waiting. I also now use Insights in events, in-person events, online events, vendor events. Why? Because Get Oiling has kiosk mode and if you don't know about it, you need to learn about it. And you can because it's one of the resources that I teach you in um, the course that I'm going to be sharing with you guys, right? And so kiosk mode is a great way to get the leads and trigger all that automation that we just showed you. While you're at a vendor event, in-person events, right? People can get the link for your page and sign up and do their scan right then. Or they can do it before they show up to an event in person. So that you can then teach them at the event about a specific topic. And then help them learn how to interpret their scan and they can then sit there and say, oh, look at this, oh, my number went up, oh, look at this. And they get excited about seeing what can happen with their wellness. And what happens for the online events? You create a call to action. If you would like a personalized wellness scan where you can learn exactly what you need. Um, that would be best suited for your health, go ahead and click this link and sign up. Whether it's free or paid or whatever, you then have the opportunity to present it as a CTA. In your online events, whether it's Zoom or Facebook or Instagram. And so again, using Get Oiling changed the game for me because I was able to then create things that can run. While I'm still working and then meet with somebody one-on-one in my free time. So it it's been fantastic. Uh, stats-wise, our Subscribe to Save was well under ten percent. Um, I was one of those people who was terrified about talking about it because I didn't want to talk to people about how they should spend their money. And then I did a lot of personal development work and realized that people need help. People need help, people are asking for help and you shouldn't be ashamed to offer a service that can change someone's life. You don't need to be a healthcare professional to have this wellness scan and offer it. You can provide somebody information that they can then make an informed, educated decision for themselves. About what they want to start with based on the price point and Young Living's website has now made it easier than ever. They can literally go in and just order one thing if they want. If they're not quite ready to order, even though they've done the scan, what I do is suggest they create their account with Young Living anyway. I set up a follow-up with them so that when they are ready, they're already linked to my organization. And you can do the same thing too. So I hope that helps you guys see a little bit about how I've set up scan and how things work with Get Oiling to do so.
Oh my gosh, can you guys think about how much you could do just with your existing customer base? How much easier do care calls become when there is a separate third-party thing? That is facilitating the exploration and recommendation of products? You don't need to know everything about the oils. You just need to know where to go, what steps to follow. And then to keep these appointments and this accountability. Linda, I'm really excited to hear what you've put together. I've seen a few people uh, sharing, you know, questions here, like, do you have like step-by-step? Do you have a checklist? Can somebody please tell me how to do this? So Linda, what have you got?
Yes, yes. So guys, as I was doing this, I I actually, not even realizing it, was documenting the process. And during so, I was able to write down everything that I did. And what I did was create an easy button to share out with the global community. Because I really feel passionate about being able to get Young Living into everyone's homes. And being able to do so in a very organic way that um, aligns with your business brand. Aligns with who you are and how you want to reach your people. And so what I did was I ended up creating a course that I call Zyto Insights Revolution. And really, the the goal of that course was to help create um, systems that you could just plug right into. Edit those as you see best fit and really get this up and running. In that, in the course, you get access to a Get Oiling bundle. And I've created campaigns and emails, email campaigns and landing pages, saved replies. And even sales pages that you can edit yourself however you see fit. In the course, you learn exactly how to do those if you're not familiar with how to edit them. If you want to learn how to create custom versions of your own original versions, you can learn that too in the course. And you can also learn how I set up videos, meaning how did I get those videos on the Get Oiling page? How did I set up the sales page? How did I connect Stripe for people to be able to pay? How did I set up Calendly to be able to get a calendar integrated into Get Oiling? And more so, how to interpret the scans? How did I create a systematic way to use the information that's already on Zyto Insights? Along with your Essential Oil Desk Reference Book, wink wink, because you all need to have that reference. How did I do so in a way that not only grew my Young Living business on the go? But it also then allowed me to create a secondary revenue stream. Because I'm offering it as a paid service for for the non-member of my team. So I've created a secondary income because I'm offering a service. And you also get to learn about a third income stream option once you're in the course. So really, I I am very passionate about business brand partners being able to have systematic ways. To remain consistent in growing their business. And I believe that using Zyto Insights Pro was a game changer because our essential rewards went from. And I believe that using Zito Insights Pro was a game changer because our essential rewards went from. Less than 10% to about 18% in, in a very short amount of time. I worked very specifically with certain legs to offer scans to their teams. So what it did was help me bridge the gap. Um, from using the scan and having a consistent way to use the scan. It helped me bridge the gap between my level ones, people who I brought into Young Living. And their level ones, twos, threes or their organization. I was then able to build a relationship with my larger organization because I was helping offer scans to my downline. It also then helped me share with my brand partners how they can then duplicate it themselves. And so what happened was I went from initially paying the uh, under forty dollars for the Zito Insight subscription. To getting all of these months of Zito Insights for free because they have an amazing referral program. Um, and so when you do a certain amount of scans a month, you get your subscription for free. And so in the course, you also learn how to collaborate with wellness professionals, how to collaborate um. Uh, for event purposes and how to really pitch um, and share with your teams this scan. Why would be amazing and how to, how they can get their hands on this on the go. And so um. It, it's been amazing. I, I really uh, have kept quiet about this little baby that I created about a year ago. And then I just really, as my life kinda calmed down, I really felt like I was super passionate to be able to get access into this. And so um, I'll do a little screen share so that you guys can see what the sales page looks like for it. And what things you can utilize on this um. On this sales page here. So the sales page link is gonna be in the chat. I highly encourage you to um, save it. Click it, let it open on another screen, put it in your notes in your phone or whatever, because this link is not on my website. Okay, so in order to get this link, unless you contact me directly through my website or social media, you won't know about it. Um, because this is really for brand partners and my Young Living, Young Living Brand Partner course, this course. Is not something that I promote on my personal page because I don't have a brand for Young Living. Um, that's not my business brand. So you get at the top here, if you wanna experience and you guys are all welcome to. Experience an actual scan. If you have never done so, go ahead and click the link at the top and you can get your own scan. I can send you a link. Um, but the sales page here really tells you a little bit about what the course is. How and what you will learn in the course. Some testimonials, of course, and this bonus offer, which you can purchase just the course. Or you can purchase the course and get this opportunity to have a digital and or print form. Of this scan sheet that I made that is able to allow you to have follow-up and effective ways to go through a scan report with somebody. While keeping track of the numbers that are changing over time. And so you get access to all of that and even this little video will show you a little bit of behind the scenes about what is offered in the course. And so when somebody clicks on this, it goes right to the vault. And they can see here how to pay. And then again, it tells you exactly what's going to be in the course. But say for some of you, you might already use Zito Insights and that's okay. Either at the sales page here at the top or the very bottom. If you already use insights and you just want access to that customized scan sheet, you can click just the scan sheet and, and pay for that if you wish. Or you can also get access to that by clicking here. So you have two different options on the vault. For how to access the course, one comes with that custom scan sheet and one is just the course itself. Or for those of you that have Zito Insights and just want access to a, an effective way to follow up, you can have that. But. Uh, inside, I don't think I have Get Oiling. Let's see, I might have. Let's see, if I go here and to the bundles, you guys can see a little bit about the bundles. Um, ooh, you guys are having to make me remember where I access my bundles.
There is so much stuff in that bundle, you guys. So if you're already using Zito Insights, then you're going to be blown away at all the things that you can. Plug straight into your Good Oiling account uh, that will help you to integrate your insight scans. And for those of you who are using iTovi or using physical scanners, like Linda mentioned earlier. You can use a lot of these tools and her strategies to offer physical in-person scans where a handheld scanner is necessary. On your website, just like Linda does. Of course, there is a lot of specialized information in here about Zito. But this is a scanning strategy that can work in person uh, yeah, and online.
Absolutely. So for me, a lot of these were initially used for Zito Balance and I kinda shifted them to Zito Insights. Because right now I'm focusing on that until I finish moving. So for those of you that do have, you know, another scan, if you're using Compass, Zito, Evox, iTovi. You can utilize the resources, you're just gonna tailor them, you're gonna tailor them to your specific scan of choice, right? And so um, you'll be able to see how to tailor the wording, how to edit the campaigns that it fits for what you use. But um, honestly, the uh, the ease of use for me in this was a game changer. Because my members benefited greatly from the information. My brand partners were able to see that whether they are at associate, star, senior star. They could do this too. And um, and, and you can really see how Get Oiling. Has created the easy button for us, guys. I mean, I am so thankful for being able to have access to Get Oiling. I can't even explain it. Uh, it has really given me a peace of mind, time back and those things are priceless. You cannot put a price tag to them. They're a hundred percent so worth it. So I, you know, again, uh, that course is offered to you guys for everything. Um, the follow-up sheet uh, price, I see a question about it. If you click on the sales page at the top or the very bottom. It says get your customized scan sheet. So you will then see there that page just for the sheet. And the sheet itself is twenty dollars US dollars. But again, I know a lot of people ask this question. Can I use Insights Pro? I live in Australia. I live in Brazil. I live in Mexico. I live in the Philippines. Can I use it? Yes. It has product catalogs for US, Mexico, Canada, Europe and international. So yes, I have sent scans to Europe. I have sent scans to Canada. You can use it in English or Spanish. So if you have somebody that does not speak English or Spanish or cannot read English or Spanish. Then you may want to be with them or on the phone with them while they're doing their scan. Because remember, it's not that you're stuck or can't do it, it's that you haven't figured out a viable solution to get past the barrier. So if you have somebody who cannot read the language that comes in English or Spanish. Then you will then get creative and sit with them while they do the scan. It takes less than 10 minutes. Help them interpret the wording so that they know exactly what to do. They can speak in their language for the voice recording because it's not monitoring the words you say. It's measuring the energetic frequency in your voice. So this is accessible to all, the course information is accessible to all that have Get Oiling. It also is accessible for those who don't have Get Oiling because you get PDF versions of the copy. But I don't know why you wouldn't have that oiling. So again, uh, you know, it's, it's really set up for those, you know, to be able to use this. So. Um, I hope that kinda explains some of those questions. I'm sure we have some more.
We do, we do. Yeah, let's go through them here real quick. And, and again, you guys, I'm gonna pop the link into the chat one more time here. Um, if you've got questions that are specifically about Zito, highly recommend that you head over to their website, wanna learn a little bit more about how the scan technology works. They have some great resources and videos that walk through that. But let's address some of these questions that are specifically for you, Linda. I've seen a few. About how you rolled this out to your team. How did you, because you've duplicated this on your team, how did you get your team connected with this?
Yeah, so how did I do that? Um, I started with my brand partners. I started with my brand partners who were actively sharing. I had them experience a scan for themselves. Think it's very powerful for when you experience a scan for yourself. Um, and so I started with them. And then I asked them the nice open-ended question of, do you feel, you know? That this could, or not even really open-ended, really just a straight question, like, do you feel this would be something of benefit for your team? You feel like the information they would receive from a scan like this would help them understand more about the products and what they could use to help them? And they all said yes. So we came up with a specific strategy for how to present it to them. Most of them, it was follow-up on the brand partner's end as they were touching base with their members. To share with them about this new thing that our team had, that they could get access to. And they would then share out the link, share out the link. And so I, I then started scanning all these people in my downline. And then emails went out to let our whole organization know because again, we had people in various countries. And so some of them started signing up. As I did um, talks with connections and collaborations with other people. I then offered the, the person, so say for instance, I met someone on Instagram. Our values aligned and I did a talk for them about health and wellness. I offered that person a scan, right? Because when you have somebody experience it for themselves, the normalcy in sharing about the experience is heightened, right? And so one of the things we wanted to normalize was this idea of sharing, not necessarily about the product. But about the experience that our team, that our service offered them. And as a result, they learned about a product, right? So we didn't lead with the product. We led with a service, right? You're going in as a service and then going from there.
Excellent. There's a clarifying question here. You do offer these scans as a service. We saw on your website currently, that's fifty dollars. That's people who are not in your Young Living organization, people who are on subscribe to save, get free scans, you said. And then there is a deep discount, you said, for folks who are customers that are not on subscription.
So usually what we do for our non-subscription individuals is, I think it's like twenty or twenty-five dollars for the scan. And when they opt, so then we have a conversation at the end about a wellness plan based on the info. And they are offered then information about signing up for subscribe to save. When they do that, we offer them account credit. Okay, so again, in the course, we're talking about ways on how to incentivize people in a way. That gets them to take action. The action is that they order products for themselves that they know is gonna be beneficial. Or they can unsubscribe to save and stop saying, I don't know what to order. I don't think I need anything else. Because that is just happening because they don't understand how the products can really help them. So that's kind of how we do it. But again, when I first started, I offered all scans for free. All of them. We did a, like a X amount a month special for our entire team. Get in now, go ahead, get your scan. And, and there was a call to action at the end of every one-on-one. And there was also a call to action on every email. If you know somebody who can benefit from information like this, send them to. To us. So we can help them learn because we knew a lot of our customers did not know how to um. You know, how to explain the scan or how to do the scan. And so we were able to do that. So it's been great.
Alright, so you guys in the chat, uh, this link here is where you can go to learn about Zito. Uh, you wanna see, like, you wanna learn about Zito Insights Pro. There's a video there, you can learn all about that. Uh, Linda's course, again, I'm gonna pop that in the chat here again. Uh, and, and you guys can head over there and get it. It is, uh, it's sixty-five dollars US. If you wanna get the whole course with all of the Get Oiling uh, resources. And you also wanna have her downloadable, brandable to you uh, worksheet that you can use to walk through with folks who have gone through a scan. So we've got a couple of uh, really uh, good questions here I wanna run through with you and then we're gonna let you go on your way back to vacation. Uh, Allison asks, um, I see you have an hour blocked off for the call. How do you know what to talk about other than telling them, here are the oils best for you right now? Go get them or get them if you haven't?
Ah, so in the course, we talk about um, different open-ended questions that you can go through and guide um, somebody with. As you explain what the information on the report um, is, is providing them. And so they get to learn um, you know, what those baseline numbers are. And, and what I do is I really let the customer kind of lead in how they want to pick the products that they're most interested in. Based on their goals. Some of them want overall wellness, some of them are looking to address a specific area. And so based on that, we're kind of leading the conversation that way. And asking them, constantly asking them, okay, well, if this is a product that came up, do you think you would be open to utilizing it? And if so, would you like to see what would happen to your overall state of wellness? If you were to use this on a consistent basis, even say for the next three to six months? And when they say yes, is when I start clicking different things. So I don't just go in and say. Okay, the report says you should, you should take this, this, this and this, and this, this and this and this, because the report gives them tons of information. It almost gives them too much information. So you wanna help guide them and steer them along. So that they're making the choice on what, what items that they would want to see. How their health would change if they were to purchase it. And then, once you have a product list under that order section, you can then talk about price point. And in the course, we talk about how do we help close that sale? How do we help get that follow-up to see, okay, you're interested in these, is there a particular price point you're looking to stay in? Um, are you looking to utilize this monthly? Are you looking to um, you know, utilize this, you know, bimonthly? And you know, how, how does it play in? We also talk about different resources, right? So we go through the desk reference in terms of reading how the product works, not the compliant version. But the real version of how said products would benefit them. And there are some open-ended questions that I'll go through in the course. That really help them to see what can be beneficial for them as they go through. So I did see somebody ask about the food scan, right? So there's a, when somebody gets a scan. They also have the option to do a basic food scan every two weeks, I believe, for free. That gives them information about foods that they should utilize and other foods that maybe they shouldn't utilize as much. Um, but the advanced food scan, um, I've been working on some of those stuff. So as um, I finished those things, those things will pop up as some bonus modules that um, as they add into the course, um, right? The course is evergreen, but as I add things to the course or update things, those who have access to the course and have already purchased it will be notified of those updates. And those who come in after the fact, just have those things after the fact. So the advanced food scan thing is, is one thing that we're currently working on, on the backend. So yeah.
Fabulous. Uh, do, do people see their reports prior to you meeting with them? So after they do their scan, did, what do they see?
Yeah, so they actually see that exact report, like with the triangles and everything from their phone or their desktop. And from there, they can start clicking, but they might just not understand what is, what they're clicking and what they're doing. Which is why for the very first scan, I always spend time going through it with them. And now I have created a video and a document for repeat scanners so that they can then know how to read the scan for themselves. Right? Because again, you want to be able to create duplication and as your team is growing. You might not always have time to sit one-on-one with people who have done scans every single month. But you may wanna focus on creating an amazing experience the first one or two times and then give them a tool. To be able to then read the scans for themselves. So that I have also created, so as you guys as brand partners. Opt to do a free scan for yourselves, which you can do at the top of the page. There um, at the sales page, you have an option to do so, is you will see the video. And you will see the document that is there to teach you how to read your own scan, right? Because this community is quite large and so I probably time-wise would not even have enough time to individually scan with each and every one of you. But as you choose to do a free scan, if you have individualized questions for your scan, you can always then email me. And we'd be happy to, you know, set up a time to go through some of that stuff with you.
Fabulous. Fellas, just a few more. Let's, we've got a, like, uh, running a bit over here and I wanna make sure we can get to as many of these as possible. How many scans would you say you do a month, knowing that you aren't necessarily present for all of them?
Um, the minimum I aim is for sixteen. The reason why is because Zito offers you a free subscription each month when you hit sixteen, brand-new, first-time scanners. So that was number one motivation for me, just like getting your product for free. Number one motivation for me was, I don't wanna pay for the subscription. And if you are actively growing a business, you are actively talking to people. And that means that you are then talking about a service that you offer. And instead of going out there and saying, oh yeah, I'm a Young Living brand partner, would you like to know about Essential Oils? I'm saying like, you know, I have a health and wellness business and I offer a service. And in that service, you can learn a little bit about what's going on in your current state of health. If that's something you're interested in, let me know. I'd be happy to share the link. And in doing so, it just normalizes me sharing out the link, sharing out the link for them to sign up for a scan. So at minimum, it's sixteen. My future goal is to consistently get fifty, fifty scans, like personally fifty. Um, that is a, just a personal goal of mine. It's a really big audacious goal for me, but hey, it's nothing like aiming for the highest, right?
Alright, there's a few questions. Alright, there's a few questions here about the physical Zito device. Is that something that you have to have to have insights? Do your folks have to have it? Like, how does that work?
Nothing. You need access to wifi, a computer, a tablet, or a cellphone. That's it.
Excellent. And there's, again, there's links in the chat here and we'll put it in the description as well to Zito's own website where you can learn all about what's needed and what you can get. And yeah, you don't have to have a Zito device to use Zito Insights. Do you, okay, so how do you meet with your brand partners or do you leave that to the brand partner? So for, maybe for folks who are using the same strategy with you, like, how do you kind of do this as a team, I guess?
Yeah. So if my brand partner is not interested in purchasing the subscription for themselves, then what they do is when they host events, they talk about the scan and they share the link to sign up, my link, right, to to share their opportunity to get a scan for their team members. If they're using Zito, the Insights Pro themselves, then they have an opportunity to share directly with their organization. And if they're using Get Oiling, then they can, you know, I can share how I set that up on my stuff. And for those that are not using Get Oiling, but maybe just have like an email CRM type of thing, again, they're, they're just utilizing the link that Zito has. And they can say, if anyone's interested, I can share out a link and they can literally just do that from their cellphone. Go log into their Zito Insights and just share it out, share it out, share it out. So it really depends on how the brand partner wishes to grow.
Perfect. Alright, Kathy says, I'm just starting and have no brand partners yet. Would you recommend me purchasing this product? So Zito and then ostensibly also your course to go with it.
For me, I would because it allows you to create an opportunity to stand out from the crowd, right? You, we are brand, all brand partners, we're all out there sharing young living products, right? And so how can you stand out from the everyday brand partner who is presenting themselves in a certain way? You're offering a service that gives somebody valuable information. You're giving somebody the opportunity to see the level of service you're offering, right? So I'm a New Yorker, right? Go to Fifth Avenue, you're going to get a certain level of service. You go downtown to Soho, you're going to get a different level of service. You want to go uptown, you're going to get a certain level of service. You want to be the Gucci of your business brand, okay? Be the Gucci, be the Nordstrom, be the Bagley Mishka, whatever you want to be, be the high-end service provider. So if you, you know, because a lot of people say, I'm a brandy brand partner, I don't have a lot of money. And I don't know if this is worth it. Can you wrap your brain around getting into fast action of talking about a service your business offers to 16 people a month to get your scans, subscription for free, grow your team organically and help people in a very large way? And pay for your Subscribe to Save. And I, I think it's absolutely doable for anyone at any level.
Absolutely. And you've got an entire system to follow here. And Linda has touched on all the bases, including what do you say? What are the words you use when you follow up with somebody? So if this, there's, there's no sort of hanging thing here. How long is the course is a question here? So what would be like the time investment you would guess?
Each of the modules are pretty short. The longest are just two at 24 minutes. Those are the ones on how to read the report. Every other video is probably four minutes, eight minutes, 10 minutes. You know, what I'll say is, don't binge them because you're, you're going into action, right? So each of the ones is going to say, here's the sales page. Do the sales page then. I, I put the order of modules in order so that you get your campaigns done. You get your sales page done. You get this done. You get your calendar in. So by the time you're ready to read reports, you have everything else in Get Oiling already set up. Time-wise, you could be done in a week. I mean, if you want to do like one thing a day, I only have 30 minutes. Okay, today I'm going to focus on the video for a sales page done. Okay, cool. You're going to have the bundle. It's probably going to take you 15 minutes to get done with it. But it's in small chunks and you can go in whatever order you see fit.
Remember, this is a New Yorker, to the point, to the point and fast.
That's right. You don't have time.
Get out of the way.
That's right. You don't have time. You guys are busy and I'm busy. You have lives, you have families and you're growing a team. And so the point is to to get info and get in action.
That's right. That's right. So absolutely, you guys, yeah, go try a free scan. Click the link in the chat in the description on YouTube when this is a recording and and experience a scan on the same page where you can go and purchase Linda's whole site. So you can learn how to use those scans with your Good Oiling system to have a complete and seamless way to get people who aren't using products and don't know products yet oriented with products in a solution-centered way. And then get your people who are customers understanding how the products they have access to are things that could transform their wellness with a goal. Remember, we're moving toward 100%. It's kind of gamified. Hi Julie. It's kind of gamified. And and now you've got people who see that Subscribe to Save is a no-brainer and you never had to sell anything, right?
Never. I just literally provided them information and they made the decision for themselves, right? And and that takes the pressure off of you. I do see somebody asks, is there an expiration to the availability of the course? No, the course is evergreen. It's always there and available. It's not available on my website. So again, save the link here. But if for some reason you lose the link, you forget the link, you can go to my website with drlinda.com and at the bottom, reach out to me on social media or email me and just be like, hey, I'm a young living brand partner. I learned about your course. Can I get the link again? I'll be happy to share it out with you. And and again, you're learning about three different ways to earn income. One, through your young living business by using Insights. Two, learning how, if you so choose, to earn additional income by offering Zito Insights as a service. And for the third one, I don't want to spill the beans, but I think I'm going to be nice to spill the beans. I have a referral program that you can then share. You can set up your own link and share out the course and earn income by sharing out the course to your brand partners, to your people who want the course. So y'all get a little insight into something that, you know, I wasn't really going to share. But those are additional ways to make income just from your young living business that are all in alignment with your young living business and don't interfere with anything else. And allow you to just press some buttons, click some links, and you're good to go.
There you go. Alright, so one last question Melissa asks, after you get settled in your new state, you mentioned going back to scanning with the hand cradle. I guess there's some curiosity here, like, why would you go back to that in person if everything is just so seamless with this on?
I think it's variety, right? This would then be what the customer would want more of. Some people feel like a little bit, that it's a little bit hands-off and they want that handheld right with you. They want to feel like they're right with you experience. And so being one-on-one in person while they do the scan will provide that. But most people honestly are picking the on-the-go option because they can do it at midnight when the kids are finally in bed. If they need to sneak off into the bathroom because they can't get away from somebody. So it's just giving options, right? And options are always nice because again, it's not always about what you want, but it's more so about letting them know that there are a variety of ways to provide them information. Which one is best for what you would like experience-wise? So that's really the only reason from a personal standpoint, I'd stick with Insights all day long. Insights for me, it was everything that I was asking for.
There you go. I'm sold. And by the way, you guys, we mentioned Linda here is a doctor. You do not need to be a practitioner, a doctor of any kind to use this. You can learn more about what Zito does on their website. And, you know, of course, Linda, I'm sure you include suggested verbiage for that, what you would put on your website, saying this is not a thing to diagnose, treat, you know, that kind of thing for compliance purposes. So all of that's included. Head over to the link. And you can, you can actually learn more about, again, the, the technology, the science, the studies, the FDA, all of that stuff on Zito's website. So please do go ahead and check that out. You can experience a scan for yourself on Linda's page that we've linked here in the chat in the link in description. Linda, thank you for spending so much time with us today and sharing this with us.
Thank you, guys. I really, really hope it blesses your teams for those of you that have been feeling like you weren't sure what to do with your Zito or your I Tobi. I hope it provides you with some insight on how to grow and how to, how to combine the two, how to make it seamless, how to make it natural for you to share with others and continue to grow because the information somebody can receive from it is phenomenal. And and so really, that was my goal when I said I'm ready to share it with the larger community was I really, really do feel that it can be so beneficial. I know that Tula asks, do you have scientific evidence of the voice scan? There is a YouTube video. I just don't have it up right now. If you message me in Instagram, I put my Instagram is Dr. Linda Allen. Or reach out to me through my website with Dr. Linda dot com. And I can share the YouTube video that specifically talks about voice analysis or the PDF that talks about the, there is extensive research on voice analysis. This is not a new technology. That's, it's been utilized for decades now for that one. So yeah, there's plenty of that information. Can I use my I Tobi for the scans instead of? Yes, yes, you can. So you would then tailor this course to everything I Tobi related, if that's what you're going to choose to use, yes. And just know that you always need the person in front of you to do your I Tobi scan. Yeah, thank you guys so much for letting me have some time. I'm off to now enjoy the rest of vacation before I head back to snowy New York. But again, I hope it blesses you. I hope you find it useful for your businesses. I hope you are able to share it out with your teams. And again, there is a Facebook community that goes with this. So at any time, if you have questions, then you can ask them in the Facebook group and and go from there. And for those of you that just want the scan sheet because you already use, you know, insights and you have a method already for yourself, go ahead and grab it. I really think we touched base upon so many reasons why this can be very, very beneficial to use along with your Get Oiling system.
Alright, fantastic. You guys, don't forget, grab that link, check out your scan and get started with this. I'm so excited to see what everyone does with it, how you integrate this with your Good Oiling site. We will see you next week, same time. Linda, enjoy your vacation. We'll keep it cold for you here in New York.
Thanks. More brother back with me, that's for sure.
Please, please. Alright, we'll talk soon, guys. Take care.
Alright, bye, everyone.